There we go, unmuted.
Okay.
It is wonderful to be here with you again this afternoon. Uh, great to see everybody was able to come and join us. And uh, we have been, we've been going through the four keys of Kabbalah, which is the title of uh, of my book. And uh, indeed, I do, I do have four keys. I think we just covered two of them last week. So we'll give a quick review. Um, after the review, if anybody has any questions from last week, and I, I'd like to just at the beginning, if we could try to keep the, if you have any questions on topic. Um, if it's not in the topic, then maybe we'll uh, we'll save it for afterwards, for later. I'll be happy to, to talk about uh, to share a conversation about anything, really. Um, so uh, including my uh, beef or delicious parshaala. Four keys of Kabbalah, but you know, I'm here already. So anyway, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding around with you. It's Sunday. Who wants to hear about Shalit on Sunday? All right. So I'm going to share with the, well, first we'll just go through key number one, what we went through was the uh, uh, we went through in short, the idea that when we're talking about existence with the Kabbalah teaches us is that anything that exists has to have a divine reality inside of it. We call that a spark of God, a Nitzot Zaloki. And the human being, that would be our Nishama, our, our soul. And our soul be also becomes our divine consciousness. So with the human, it's a, it's more than just a spark with the human being, it becomes a consciousness that allows us to be aware of ourself. And more amazingly, it allows us to become aware of God. So, and that is only with the human being, but anything that exists, whether it be a galaxy above, or it be a, an emotion below, or a little insect, a tiny creature. Everything has inside of it divine information. And I shared with you the uh, the theory of Professor Wheeler, who says that in our age of information, we must come to realize that anything that exists has to have information behind it. And uh, there was actually a professor who uh, met him and spoke to him about these ideas in Kabbalah. And he said, if, if there is somebody who can tell you what that information is, you have to hold that person very near and dear. So this same physicist uh, did become aware of the teachings of uh, Hasidic philosophy. And he was, he was very, he was fond of them. Uh, this was towards the end of his life. Uh, again, Professor Jonathan Archibald Wheeler. Uh, it's just amazing when you find ideas in Kabbalah and Hasidic thought, and then you see a uh, a scientific theory that fits with that. Uh, that's really quite uh, that's quite astonishing. You know, uh, for the believer, it's astonishing that somebody who's not learning this information can, can come upon it. Uh, for the person who's maybe still working on belief, that we can uh, find support in other areas for the existence of God in such a profound way. This is uh, it's, it's inspiring. It's uplifting. So getting back to the idea, the idea is that anything that exists has within it a divine spark. So we spoke about the seemingly ideal situation where we wake up in the morning and we realize our Nishama, our divine consciousness has been given back to us. And we are full of gratitude to God for giving us this Nishama. And we're just, we're just overwhelmed with emotion. And we say, I am thankful before you, living and existing king, that you have restored my soul within me faithfully, or with compassion. Great is your faithfulness. I can rely on you. Well, that's the modani that we say every morning. However, if you're like me, it could be that you said it this morning, but you maybe don't remember saying it. Maybe it took a second or two when you know it. And the nice thing about when you first start learning a prayer, the beauty of it is that it takes you longer to say it, which is wonderful. When, once you know it, you can say it by rote and it's very easy. And if we have time, maybe later on in today's class, we'll do a modani meditation. To really internalize this most powerful prayer of the Jewish people. It is, it is really, I think, hands down, the most powerful prayer. But imagine you wake up in the morning, you're aware of your own divine consciousness. You're, you see godliness all around you. You see godliness in the whole world, right? That would be so amazing. So why didn't God think of that? Right? God is like, couldn't God have created a world where we'd be aware of godliness? So we gave the analogy, which we're not going to be going into today. And we, we had a great discussion on pedagogy about two different types of teachers. One teacher that reveals everything and explains it. Uh, and, and any idea is, is developed and uh, basically brought forth in a, in a lucid fashion, so that every student can understand it. And then you have another teacher that bends over backwards to not reveal the main idea. That is teaching, because what the teacher is teaching through is teaching through discovery. That the, allowing the students themselves to find the information. And the benefit of that is, well, of course, we went through, through many ideas. Everybody, uh, many of the, of the students here had, had great uh, great insights into the benefits. What I go into in the four keys of Kabbalah is that when you discover something, when it was concealed, when it was hidden and you discover it, you now have ownership. It's yours. Right? As we know, uh, practically, if a scientist discovers a new uh, a new molecule inside of a plant and it can cure a disease, he discovered it and he has the rights to that, even though the plant has been existent for uh, thousands of years. And the, of course, the molecule inside of it has also been existent, but it wasn't isolated. It wasn't discovered. It was concealed. And when the, when the scientist discovers it, that becomes his. You have ownership. And when you discover an idea, it becomes yours. When it become yours, when you have ownership, this is the only way that we can have meaning in life. So if you go and listen to an inspiring speaker and they tell amazing stories and it's so uplifting and it's, they bring you to a different realm and you, you're, you're just, you're just so enthralled with the, with the beautiful, inspiring, uplifting message. Y'all know that right afterwards, we go back to being ourselves, right afterwards, right? Unless we apply it, right? Unless we, unless we really work at it and figure out a way to apply it in our life through the process of discovery, it's never going to become real. We're never going to have ownership and we're not going to have real meaning. Real meaning, purpose and value only comes when we find it on our own, when we all do our own work. And every human being has their own challenge that way in finding God in the world. So going back to the four keys, I'm going to share here a screen. Kabbalah key number one. All that exists has a divine spark within it. An aspect of the infinite within the finite. So anything that exists has this divine spark. From the highest of high and all, also by the way, for those who have studied Kabbalah, the highest spiritual levels all have this divine spark within it as well, down to our physical universe and everything from the largest construct to the tiniest construct, each has within this divine information. Key, Kabbalah key number two. The divine spark is concealed within a negative energy field that keeps us from readily perceiving it. This is called in the language of Kabbalah, this is called klepa. Klepa means a shell. So you have the divine spark, but you have a shell around it. And the shell around it is why when we look at the world, we don't see godliness unless we put forth some effort. So when we put forth effort, then we're able to discover. And this is what we've been discussing that uh, in order to discover, we all know you have to look, you have to search, you have to find, but a key element of discovery is concealment. Without concealment, you cannot have discovery. If everything was apparent, you couldn't find it. Right? You ever play hide and go seek as a child and all the kids just hang around? They don't go anywhere. Ah, I found you. You're right there. That's not hide and go seek. Nobody hid. Nobody was sought. Everybody was there. There's no game. When you hide, when something is concealed, then you can find it, then you can discover it. And as we discussed last week, the very meaning of the word that we don't even think about. Uh, that when we discover, we are, we, we discover, right? That's, that's what the word is from. The word itself means to discover. So something was concealed and now we find it through finding it, through finding that divine energy in the world, in ourself, in another person. We now have ownership over that whole process, over the divine process, over godliness itself. We have ownership. And that is what gives us meaning, purpose and value. That brings us, of course, to Kabbalah key number three, which is the divine spark is concealed to enable us to discover it. So this we already know. This follows, the reason why we live in a world of concealment, where godliness is not apparent, and sometimes it's a real challenge to find it in our own self and others and the world. There's only one reason why it's concealed. Think of it as a spiritual obstacle course. Or as I like to call it, an obstacle illusion. It appears to be something getting in our way. But really, all it is, is something telling us to dig deeper and find it. On this note, who could tell me who, who was the very first Jewish person? You can unmute, call it out. Very good. Ben, I could read your lips. Abraham. So um, anybody who said Abraham Avraham Avinu, so are the first patriarch of the Jewish people, the very first Jewish person was Avraham Avinu, Abraham. So the question is, why was he chosen? Why was he selected? What do we see about him? That, that made him to be the very first Jewish person. And there's a lot of discussion about this. There, there are many different reasons. But in the four keys of Kabbalah, I put forth another theory about that. Ben, please.
I wanted to say, he was able to spread it willingly and able to, to spread the, the word.
So absolutely.
I was going to ask you a question, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
I thought you said number two is to, to find the Nitzot and the Kipa.
No, so.
Now you said the number three.
Right, right. I, I break it up this way. Kabbalah key number one is that everything is, everything has a God, godly spark. Everything has the Nitzot Zaloki.
Yeah.
Kabbalah key number two is that every Nitzot Zaloki is concealed.
Okay.
And the third one is it's concealed in order that we can discover it.
Oh, so I added to it on the number two.
Right. I mean, one flows into the other. They're really all, it's really one key. It's like, it's like the fear cautious, the four questions we ask at the Seder.
Yeah.
Why do we eat matzah? Why don't we eat the leaven? Why are you eating this? Why is that? It's really one question. What makes this night different than all other nights?
Thank you.
That's only one question. So over here, there's really only one key, but I break it into four parts. Yes. So and we'll soon see key number four also flows from key number two and one, two and three flow into number four. So, so discovery. Okay. So getting back to Abraham. So Ben brings across a good point. Abraham was the very first person who disseminated, who took this idea of godliness and spread it in the world, made other people aware of it. I'd like to share another idea that perhaps is uh, goes even uh, the source behind that. Why is it that Avraham, why is it that Abraham merited to be able to do that? To have that commitment to God and godliness more than any other human being before him. But beforehand, I have to say hello to Rabbi Smith Jr. What, what is your child's name? Just a lift to get him on the screen. Oh, you don't have. Oh, no wonder why I found such a connection to him. I like, I see his, I see his face and I say, I, I know this guy. Good to see you. Good to see you. All right.
Rabbi.
Yes.
I, I just wanted, I don't know if you know the quote, but there's a quote from a non-Jewish Nobel Prize winner. And in his speech, he said, I did not discover anything. I only uncover, which says it all.
Right, right. So, so our, our, we, we are disagreeing only in semantics, but yes, that's exact. But that, but what he didn't realize is that the word discover itself really just simply means to, to, to discover it, right? It's covered, it's concealed and he uncovered it, right? Exactly. That's exactly correct. Good. No, I wasn't aware of that. Who, who was the uh, who, who was the Nobel?
Could look it up. He was a Nobel Prize winner. That's his speech.
I'll have to look it up. Okay. So what I want to put forth here is a very interesting thing about the very first Jewish person, Avraham. Listen to this. Abraham was the very first human being to discover God. Think about that. There was no person bef- before him that discovered God. In the Torah, looking in the, in the story of the Torah, did Adam discover God? No, God created Adam and he was automatically aware of his creator.
God talked to him.
God spoke to him directly, right? So Gerd is golfing, but as we say in Yiddish, but anyway, I'm kidding. It lasted for a little bit. Robert.
I think the important part is that also he separated monotheism from polytheism. And so in discovering that there was only one God, and that's an important element for people to understand.
Right. This is very true. Um, I'd like to, I, I'd like to make a point on that. That is that Noah was also thoroughly aware of one God, as was Adam. As was um, Seth, as were many of the, many of the people listed in the lineage in the Bible, many of these people, Anosh. These were all people who were aware of one God. So they all knew, but he, as you say, he is the one who taught it, who, who spread it. The point that I'm making here was that all other people who had a relationship with God, who believed in one God, that may have been few and far between, by the time Abraham came around, they all knew about God because they were taught by their father, by their grandfather. So Noah, it's uh, our sages tell us that Noah was taught by his grandfather. Anybody know his grandfather's name? Mithushelach. Or in English, they call him Methuselah. So that was his grandfather who lived the longest of anybody. He lived to nine hundred and I think sixty-nine years. And the, does the Torah list the, how long everyone lived? So Methuselah was a man who was close to God and he taught his grandson Noah. So Noah didn't discover. Adam didn't discover. Noah's children didn't discover. They knew it. In fact, even before Abraham was born, there was a yeshiva. There was a place where people who wanted to find God could go to study. It was called the yeshiva, the academy of Shem and Ever. Shem was Noah's son. Ever was his great, great grandson. And together they made a yeshiva. They had an academy where people could go and study, but they were all being taught by people who were taught by their parents or grandparents or by God himself. Abraham, on the other hand, he was born into a family of idolatry. What was his father's profession?
Storing.
He manufactured and sold idols. Imagine that. The founder of Judaism, the founder of monotheism. His father made idols for a living. And Abraham was brought up in that culture. He was brought up in that mindset. And in today's day and age, it's, it's very hard for us to appreciate because sometimes we look at people who are idol worshippers and we, and we just dismiss them. Oh, they're silly. They're, you know, they were, they were following nonsensical ideas, but imagine a, a boy growing up today and and, and being, and being taught all of a sudden by a teacher in school that Miami Heat, they have absolutely no significance whatsoever. No importance, right? Or some other, that's a, that's a Miami team, right?
Yeah.
Popular, I assume for any, any, any uh, boy or possibly even girl growing up, right? That, that's just the reality of, in, in the life in which people live. So imagine somebody all of a sudden comes along and says, sports? It means, it's nothing. It's meaningless. They're going to be attacked. Right? Hopefully only verbally, but maybe even worse depending upon which sport and which country. If you start touching on soccer, you know, European football in, in, in Europe, forget about it. You may not escape with your life. So I, I use that as an analogy to help us understand what idolatry was then. Idolatry was all of the rage and there was a sensibility about it. There was a sensibility about it. It was wrong. It was a distortion. Abraham grew up in that culture. He was raised by parents. He grew up in, and Abraham himself came to realize that this cannot be the truth. And he started, the, the Medrash tells us, he started looking at sun worship. Uh, but that the sun set, he started looking at moon worship, but then the moon set. And he looked at, at this ideology and this theology and this um, or polytheology. He looked at all of the different idolaters practices to try to find the truth and none of them satisfied him. And he kept on looking and searching until he came upon the idea that there must be one creator of existence who we cannot see. Now for us, we all say, yes, this is God. That makes perfect sense to us. But Abraham to come and realize that on his own, had God revealed himself to Abraham at that point? No, he didn't. Have you heard about the story of the king Nimrod hearing about Abraham and throwing him into a furnace? That's what happened. That was his reward. His father was a great help, bringing him to the king. The king said, I want you to bow down to me. Abraham, as the, as a youngster said, I'm not bowing down to you. There's one God in the, in, in, in the universe. We cannot see him. And he said, we're going to throw you into the furnace and we'll see how your God helps you then. Now, a lot of us feel, if you, if we've heard the story, we think, well, certainly God had come to Abraham and spoken to him. The answer is no. God had not come to Abraham yet. This was all going on Abraham's conviction. Godliness was absolutely concealed in that era. And who discovered it? Again, you know, discovered, right? Who discovered godliness? It was Abraham. He was the very first person to discover God. And that is why he was the first Jew. Because he discovered it, it became real to him. He had ownership over it. Meaning, purpose and value. And that is why he then disseminated it and taught the entire universe about one God. So this is really the start of Judaism. So now Kabbalah key number four is pretty uh, is pretty clear. It follows from Kabbalah key number three. When we discover the hidden spark, whoop, I did not share the screen. I will. When we discover the hidden spark, we become partners in creation. Partners. If you're a partner, that means you have ownership, right? And ownership brings meaning, purpose and value. So that is the fourth key. So the four keys, everything is, everything that exists has God inside of it. Maybe what I'll do is I'll make this a little bit smaller if you want to. Are you uh, still able to see that? Just trying to put two on there. So Kabbalah key number one. Everything that exists has a divine spark inside of it that allows it to exist. Kabbalah key number two. That spark is concealed. Kabbalah key number three. It's concealed in order to allow us to discover it. And the purpose of that is Kabbalah key number four, because through discovery, we become partners. And through partnership, we are, we have ownership. And through ownership, we have meaning, purpose and value. Robert.
I don't know if you know it or not, but every week we um, have the opportunity of writing an essay on our morning or our afternoon class, which this is the afternoon. Do you know how, I'd love to be able to have you, if you know how to, is to put the, the PF, the PDF um, in the chat so we can then print it. So we could then use that as the base of one of our essays, right? Rabbi Smith?
Oh, you mean the four keys?
Yeah. If you can put the PDF, um, then we can, what I do is that I'm able to then print it out and use as a reference when I write my essay.
Sure. I, I will, I will send a, um, I'll, I'll send a, a PDF to to Rabbi Smith. Uh, we'll do that right now. Pretty easy. So I'll just, I'll send him the PDF. That way he'll have it.
Okay. He'll send it to us then. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Just been having some challenges in my computer here. So we'll see. Hopefully I'm able to do that. Oh, print. Oh, all right. And.
Rabbi, I think you could put the PDF inside chat. Chat, right.
I can, yes. Not, I can do that, but not, not everybody knows how to get it from there.
It's true. I don't.
We have become versed in how to do that. So.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay. Now, what I point out, let me just grab the, here we go. Four keys. PDF, today's day and age. Should be easy. So I'm going to send it in the chat and then I'm also going to send a copy to uh, to Rabbi Smith. That way uh, he'll be able to send it to anybody who wants.
Got the PDF.
Okay. Great. So this is, these four keys are basically what every single thing in Judaism is all about. In other words, every mitzvah, every holiday, every practice, every Jewish practice is basically a way for us to mine the divine within existence and within ourself. Every single practice of Judaism is a way for us to find, to discover the hidden divine spark. And I'll give you, I'll give you an analogy. Well, not an analogy. I'll give you an example rather. So the example would be the modani, uh, the prayer that I mentioned earlier. So when we wake up in the morning prior to our uh, prior to our uh, discussion about the four keys, let's talk about normal people when they wake up in the morning. So most people, when they wake up in the morning, how do they feel? Tired? Has anybody ever woken up and felt, ah, I'm going to go back to sleep again?
Yeah.
Press the snooze button?
Yeah.
And has anybody ever woken up not being thoroughly excited about what just happened? This, this occurs, right? This could occur very often, right? You wake up in the morning. Now there's an amazing thing that Judaism teaches us about waking up in the morning. And that is that when you wake up, well, rather I should say, when you go to sleep, part of when you wake up, well, rather I should say, when you go to sleep, part of your life, part of your vitality, it's, it's a little part of death. Your consciousness, of course, goes away. Your conscious mind is no longer working and that is, you know, a scientific fact. That's, that's the truth of the matter. In the morning we wake up and even if a person is a non-believer, they get their consciousness back. But as Jewish people, we understand that what you're getting back is your nishama. You're getting your divine consciousness back. You're getting your absolutely perfect part of God that is within each and every one of us, comes back to us in its full way when we wake up. Life, consciousness, divine awareness. In fact, when you wake up in the morning, there's nothing better that's going to happen to you the entire day. You know, sometimes you wake up in the morning and you're thinking, ah, you know, I'm going to meet an old friend. I'm going to watch a movie. I'm going to have a delicious dinner. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna go golfing. I'm gonna, whatever it is, I'm going to learn Torah. I'm going to go to Rabbi Smith's Torah class. That's going to be amazing, right? I'm gonna, I actually have scheduled today a meeting. I'm going to be making a billion dollars today. Later on in the afternoon. Great. That would be an exciting day, don't you think? A day when you're going to be making a billion dollars, a little exciting. Nothing, but nothing that happens to you your entire day is better, is a greater gift than what happened to you the moment that you wake, that you open your eyes, that you wake up in the morning. This is the greatest gift. However, that's the divine reality. The human reality is that that awareness is concealed. It's shrouded in human nature. Human nature includes what we call the yetsarah, the evil inclination, the animal soul that allows us to wake up in the morning and think, ah, I'm going to hit the snooze alarm. I'm tired. I'm. That attitude is coming from lack of awareness of the truth of the matter, of the divine spark, of the divine reality in this moment. What is the divine reality in this moment that your soul is now coming back to you? So if you would think for a moment, and maybe you did already this morning, maybe when you said the modanim, maybe you said the modanim and didn't think about it, which happens to me very often. Or maybe you didn't say the modanim altogether. So I'd like, let's think for a moment. Let's contemplate, okay? God has given me back my life, my consciousness. A part of God, my nishama is a part of God from above inside, right? And this has been given back to me at this moment. What, what would you want to say?
Thanks.
Thanks. Right? Thanks would be a very good thing to say. And that is the beginning of the prayer that we say every morning upon waking. We say, modanim, I am thankful. The very first word upon the lips of a Jewish person is thank you. Think about that. That, that is an amazing gift. What the Torah is giving us is a way to discover and to find the truth of the matter. In other words, naturally in the morning, I would be tired and maybe unenthusiastic. That's the concealment. Judaism gives me this prayer, this tefillah, the modanim, to allow me to find the truth of the matter, the divine spark within this moment. The divine spark within this moment is, you know what the first thing we should say when we wake up? Maybe we shouldn't say before the modanim, but at least we should think it. Wow. Imagine waking up in the morning and, all right, we have our initial fog, but right after the initial fog, I'm alive. Wow. I've met people who have told me that they do not take life for granted. I have a hard time believing that anybody doesn't take life for granted. It's always there, right? You're always, but there's one moment at least in the day when you can realize that you're coming back to life. And our reaction, our emotion, our feelings should be, wow. Modanim lefanecha. So what I'd like to do with you this moment is a, we'll do a little bit of a modanim meditation. So the thing is, is that oftentimes we, uh, we wake up and we're, we're not aware, we're not thinking. And, and, and part of it is because we, we don't spend enough time really thinking about it. And that's why I've developed the modanim meditation. I'm just going to find it here. And I can send this, uh, this PDF along as well. And you know, I have a big problem with Jewish prayer, with davening. I don't know about anybody else here. Anybody else here have a problem with, with davening? I've got a big problem with davening. My, my big problem with davening, with prayer, with Jewish prayer is, is that every single word is jam-packed with meaning and significance. And we go and we pray the words as if, as if they deserve only a quarter of a second. That's the whole prayer. But each word is filled with meaning, filled with significance. So I'd like to share with you a little bit of that. And what we're going to do is, and I talk about a meditation. I don't know if this is a meditating group or not, but meditation is a charged word. What meditation really means is simply contemplating, thinking about it. Instead of just saying it, instead of just hearing it, instead of studying it, to actually marinate in the idea. You know how you take a piece of, of beef and you let it marinate so that the, the flesh absorbs the flavor? Well, with our brain, it's the same thing. We have ideas and we study them. But when we study it, sometimes we go in and out, you know? Just, just like dipping it quickly. When you marinate, yes, please.
Can you make the screen larger?
Yes.
You marinate, you have to be careful. Might disintegrate the meat too.
You know what? This is, this should be our problem, that we disintegrate into our awareness of God. There, there are people that that happened to. And their prayers. There was a great sadik, a great righteous man. And he, his greatest desire was that he should leave his, his, his soul should leave his body while he's praying. And his kids would always go and make sure to distract him. They didn't want that to happen. But lo and behold, one day somebody wasn't paying attention and he was in the middle of prayer and his soul expired, his soul disintegrated. His reality, his physical reality disintegrated into the essence of God during prayer. So I'm not suggesting anybody do that.
Wasn't there a case like that where his wife was, was doing that or something?
Where his wife was distracting him?
Yeah. Maybe I'm wrong.
Could, no, could be a different story. It could be in another, uh, another sadik. There were many people I'm sure that this, that this happened to. So.
There's a particular rabbi that used to say goodbye to his wife every morning before he went to shahars because he might not come back.
Okay.
Because he might expire while he's davening.
Who, you know, you remember the name, which sadik that was?
I forget.
Interesting, interesting. Well, I can say very confidently, I don't have that problem. So, uh, you know, and the, the idea of course ultimately is not to expire. The idea is to inspire. Right? We should be moved by the prayer. We should be moved that we really get it, that we really feel it. But a lot of times, because we don't really think about it, we don't end up feeling it because we don't give it the time to think. So what we're going to do now is something a little unusual, perhaps. Maybe you've done it before, but if you haven't, it'll be unusual. We're going to actually take some time to think about each and every word. Uh, Robert?
Is it, I don't want to be bothered, but there's a way you can put that on the chat as well.
Oh, yes. Uh, you mean before, should I do it, should I do it now or I can do it later?
Do it now because I'm printing it out and I can use it as a reference with, with our discussion.
Got it. Yes, yes, for sure.
Thank you, Robert, for being a watchdog.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. I gotta find the right file here. Here we go. And gotta open up the chat thing. And here you go.
Right. Thank you.
Ding. No problem. Okay. So you know, have you ever said thank you to somebody?
Maybe.
And not meant it in your heart? Especially in America. You know, I'm an American boy and we were trained to just always say thank you, which is very nice. So we, we're polite. But there's a drawback. The drawback is that it just becomes something that you say and not necessarily feel. So you can, we can say thank you and not really feel it or feel a little bit sometimes, but not profoundly. So now God just gave us our life. Let's think about that. We realize that our life is entirely dependent upon God. Well, let's close our eyes and think about these words, modanim, that I am thankful. And we, and we have to think in order to, in order to know what you're thankful for, in order to realize the depth of your gratitude, you need to know what you're thankful for, right? You're thankful for God giving me my life. As we're going to say soon, shehachazarta bi nishmati, that you have returned my soul within me. So let's, let's take just a minute and think about our gratitude to God for giving us life. And let us put in this that we are lefanecha, that we are actually offering this before God himself. Lefanecha, we'll put in melach chay v'kayyam, that I'm thankful before you, a living and existing God. So I'm aware that God is the king and provider for the entire universe, yet he deals with me on a personal and willful level. This is a very important thing in prayer to realize. We're not thanking, you know, God in general, we think, thank for what he does in general, but for God is doing for me specifically. Imagine that God has picked your soul individually and personally, so to speak, put it right back into you this morning. That God did that personally for you. Well, that's really what's happening. So let's contemplate for a moment that I am thankful, modanim lefanecha. I'm thankful before you, melach chay v'kayyam. The living and existing God who is giving me my soul personally, individually. That is a conscious act of God for me. Shehachazarta bi nishmati b'chamla, that you have restored my soul within me with mercy. Kabbalah explains that there's different levels of the soul. We're not going to go into the different levels. I speak about them in my book. But the different levels of the soul, basically there, you have your level that allows you to live, the level that allows you to feel, the level that allows you to think. The highest level of the soul is yichida, the essence of the soul, where that is totally perfectly united with God. And it is this level of the nishama, God is restoring his essential connection to me is what he's giving back to me when I wake up this morning. Let's contemplate that for a moment. And we say, b'chamla, God is doing it with mercy. Sometimes, you know, people think, um, maybe I'm not so deserving. Am I deserving that the creator of the entire universe should give me my soul back? An essential part of my soul that's connected with him? Maybe I'm not deserving. God does it with mercy. It doesn't have to do with you. It's not all about you. It's about God's mercy. This is the most merciful act that God is doing, is giving us back our soul. Raba emunatcha, great is your faithfulness. We can rely on God every morning. And we have to make sure, the amazing part here is that even though it happens every morning, the unfortunate reality of things that happen every day is that we end up taking them for granted. But imagine if we shift that paradigm and we realize every single morning, God is giving me back my soul. God's faithfulness is unending. How great is his faithfulness? So instead of thinking, oh, well, that happened yesterday, that happened the day before. That's happened for thousands of days before, since the beginning of my life. God's faithfulness, every single morning, God is giving me back my soul. So let's take a moment, everybody in your own thoughts, in your own mind, to take a moment to contemplate the modanim. And then we'll actually say, we'll recite the modanim. And now that we've thought about this wondrous prayer, let us say together. You can say it in the Hebrew with the transliteration or read it in the Hebrew or, uh, or, or recite it at the English.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
After him lies actually compassion.
Okay. So think compassion. God's act of compassion.
I have another question, Rabbi.
Sure.
Can you go to the end?
Oh, sure. Uh huh.
So are we emphasizing there that our, that we have a muna in Hashem? Or that Hashem has a muna in us?
Okay. That, that's a very good question. So the word amuna has a few different meanings. We're used to today, we're, we're thinking about amuna being, having faith in something, either us having faith in God or God having faith in us. Here, actually, I'm, I'm going to give you the simple meaning of the, of the translation here. It's actually none of that. It doesn't mean having faith. It's being faithful. What do we mean when, when someone is faithful?
But when we are saying it, we are saying it that God has faith in us.
We're not saying that.
He's saying your faith.
Right, right. That, that's a nice, as we say, that's a nice, it's, that's a nice angle. And I'm all for it, but that's not actually what the, what the tefillah is saying. So if you want to think about that as well, and I think I may have even put that, you must have faith in me that I, it's the greatest faith that God has in us that he's giving us back our soul. There's no question, but it's just not the meaning of the words, right? The meaning of the words, I just want to share you because I always, I think it's always important to stay to the number one, to start off with the peshat, with the simple meaning. What does it mean when someone is faithful? That means that they can be relied upon. Right? It's being faithfulness. That's, and that's, that's the meaning of the word. Now, if you want to take it from there to realize, well, if God is giving me my soul, clearly he has faith in me. Absolutely. That's a wonderful takeaway, but that's not quite the meaning of amunatecha here. We're not saying that God has faith in us. What we're saying is great is your faithfulness. It's not the normal meaning. In the Torah, many times when it says amuna, by he, vatih yadav amuna, his, his hands were, were raised up faithfully, I think ad bo hashamesh, until the, until the sunset. His hands were, were faithfully remaining above steadily and faithfully. We have other, um, other, many other words having to do with amuna, like training, uh, uh, imun, right? In Hebrew. And so, so we always look at the word, or most of the time we think it's talking about faith, having faith in something. That's not quite the meaning here. Simply amunatecha, great is your faithfulness. Again, not to the exclusion of the fact that the, the obvious takeaway that God has faith in us, but that's just not the meaning of the word here. So let's get back to the meditation. And it's good to go through all these things because when you're saying the prayer, you want to be just focused on the prayer without any questions. Your questions you can ask before or after, but for the meditation, you just want to be clear minded on the, on the, on the idea here. So let's take a, a moment to contemplate again. We'll start a contemplation, just a shorter one to, how about just, let's focus for 15 seconds on gratitude to God for giving us our life. Take a deep breath in, symbolizing God's gift of life. And hold it for a second and exhale. And let us recite together. Moda ani lefanecha, melach chay v'kayam. Shehach zarta bi nishmati b'chamla, raba emunatecha. So this is an example. How does, what does this have to do with the four keys? Again, because the four keys is telling us that everything about Judaism is giving us a way to discover something that is concealed, a reality that is concealed. And through this discovery, we have ownership. So God could have made us in such a way that as soon as we wake up in the morning, we'd be aware, but he didn't. He made us in such a way that most of us, when we wake up in the morning, we're tired and we're in our bed and we have our pillow and we have a snooze alarm, right? That's our world, but nevertheless, we rise above that. We find the reality of this moment. We wake up in the morning and we take a breath and we say, in our minds, we say, wow! And we recite the modah ani. And in that way, we become aware of the divine spark in this moment, the divine spark in ourselves, our nishama. And this is going to be true for the blessings that we say on food, for the mitzvot that we keep, for the mezuzah that we put on the door. Every single practice in Judaism is really about these four keys. So if anybody has any thoughts on the, uh, on the meditation or anything else that I said, we'll open up.
I have a, I have a thought about the sparks. I thought the Jews were told not to go back to Egypt after, after we left Egypt. And one of the explanations was because there was no more sparks left in Egypt.
That's the, that is the kabbalistic, that is the kabbalistic explanation for that mitzvot. Yes, exactly.
But, but the, the things were not totally destroyed in Egypt. They lost later, they, they lost later their, their control or the greatness, but, but things were still there.
I see what you're saying. Okay. All right. So this is, this is going to be a little bit, okay, this is a very good point that you bring up. So when you speak about sparks, divine sparks, there's divine sparks and there's divine energy. Okay? So I'm using the word divine spark, but maybe that's not accurate. Really, really the terminology really should be divine energy through the letters of creation. And that's going to be a little bit different than the sparks because you're right, there's sparks, there are a very finite amount of sparks in existence, 288. And when we left Egypt, we took 202 out of Egypt and it's cleared out of those sparks. The divine energy is still there because you're right. If the divine energy left, there wouldn't be in Egypt anymore, right? It would just be a vacuum, nothing there. So you're right. It's, we use the word, sometimes we use the word interchangeably, but you're, but you're correct. To be more accurate, it's a divine energy that is created through the divine word, through the 10 utterances of creation. Mordechai. You're, I don't hear.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Uh, yes, yom modah ani is so important and it's done even before we wash our hands. And in fact, I think there's an entry in our yom yom that says that the words of modah ani are so holy that even or on washed hands cannot contaminate them.
That's correct. It's referring to the level, the level of the soul, the yechida that I referred to, right? This is referring to the very essence of the soul that is beyond any contamination, meaning there are parts of us that can become affected by negativity or by our own actions. But you want to know something? We each have a part of ourself, an impregnable essence of God that cannot be contaminated. And that is why, as Mordechai is saying so beautifully here, we wash our hands, even, excuse me, we recite the prayer even before we wash our hands, which is counterintuitive. You think, wash your hands and then say the prayer.
No.
But here, the teaching is that this prayer goes so high, so deep, that there is nothing that can possibly contaminate it. So we don't wash our hands. We specifically don't wash our hands until afterwards. Beautiful point. Thank you for bringing that up, Mordechai. It's my favorite hayom yom, one of my many favorite hayom yom.
Rabbi?
Phyllis?
Yes.
Long time.
Well, I've been thinking very carefully over everything you're saying and a number of points. I don't, not to belabor them, but I really am very grateful for Hashem Ados Proku every time I wake up, but I am still so, uh, especially, I don't know whether it's my biorhythms in the morning, it's, I'm so slow and so sluggish and it takes me like two hours for the circulation and everything, even if I have to go somewhere and I'm doing something, but I'm, you know, I would be able to do so much more and, and the spirit, as they say, the spirit is willing, but the flesh is not, you know, to, to be able to, 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 to have the energy, the physical energy.
Let me address that. Let me address that.
One, one point. The other point I wanted to make is that I'm sure that there's a definitely divine energy in Egypt for our long history with them, even after the yitzhak mitzrayim. And the fact that that Nile is so dependable and has given so much to the world and to that region, in fact, that Hashem Ados Proku, um, must have meant it to be like that. And that divine energy is still there and is gonna be still there. And that's why the Egyptians are such conservationists when it comes to being so, so conservative and so traditional and they're maintaining, you know, like recently they inaugurated their museum to glorify their history.
So let's, we're gonna keep, let's, let's try, let's keep it to the modah ani theme because the mitzrayim, the whole mitzrayim theme is going to take us, uh, off course, but on your, on your first point here, also, you know, the Hebrew word for mitzrayim, it means constraints and limitations, which is what you're feeling in the morning. Which is what you're feeling in the morning when you wake up. So this is, this is the thing. We can be, sometimes when I wake up in the morning, particularly after I do this meditation, it helps for a few days when I wake up in the morning. And I say this modah ani and I'm so filled with gratitude, even though I'm still tired, even though I might be exhausted and even though I know it's going to take me time to wake up, to, to pray properly and do everything properly. That's okay. It doesn't mean that you're jumping out of bed exuberantly. You know what? Sometimes we can have a, an exuberant wow and sometimes we can have an internal profound wow. Maybe my body's not ready for the exuberant wow right now, but I can feel that wow deep inside my nishama as soon as I wake up, even though my body is not yet up to that. Is that helpful?
Well, a little, I do feel that, but I wish I had the, the, the stronger oomph and, and also with respect to this, why is it so difficult for me then to fall asleep at night?
Well, this is not something that I'm gonna talk about because there are people who are experts in this field who can, who can help you, but this is a good question. How, do you, do you have any anxiety?
What?
Do you have any anxiety?
Plenty.
A lot.
You know what? There was a guy who was, uh, he was like such a, such a Jewish mother. Sorry to stereotype. He was always worried about everything. Yankel, Yankel the worrier. One day his friend sees him and says, Yankel, you look so peaceful. You look like you have not a worry on your mind. That's amazing. What happened? He says, well, I hired a professional worrier. Really? Yeah. And he worries about everything for me. I don't have to worry about anything anymore. That's amazing. I want to hire someone too. How much does it cost? It's cost $3,000 a month. Says, Yankel, how could you afford that? Yankel looks at him and says, it's no longer my worry. So, you know.
It was his first project.
What, if, if only, right? If only we could, uh, if, if only we could get rid of our, our worries like that. But the, but the truth of the matter is, um, Phyllis, that, you know, taking some time and give everything and giving every single thing, every single worry over to God before we go to bed. Not right away, but maybe an hour before we go to bed. To give everything over to God and say, God has taken such amazing care. He's gonna do the same. And you have to think about that and you might have to say it again and again and again. And, and the, you know, we all have a negativity bias. It's, you know, it's, it's part of what we have. Scientists have, have talked about it. Judaism speaks about it. So it must be true, both, both coming from a different angle, but both talking about that we all, every human being has a negativity bias. And that's what we are meant, and that's part of the concealment, right? That we are meant to overcome through putting our confidence in God.
Yeah, that does help.
And we, we, but you can't just say it once. You, you have to give it some time to realize and think about and to unwind. And that's why we say, before we go to bed, we say, in your hand, I entrust my soul.
Yes.
Redeem me, oh, God of truth.
You have to mean it too.
Yeah. Oh, really? That's the, that's the problem.
Saying is not enough.
That's the problem. Well, that's what I'm saying. You know what? And, and, and meaning it means sometimes you have to read it in the English beforehand and think about it before you say it. And that's what I find that a lot of times I, I think about the prayers, I know the meaning and I know how to read the words, but, but we have to marry the words to the meaning, which means we have to think about it a little bit beforehand and say, God, I'm giving it all over to you. You're doing such a remarkable job.
Yes. I think that gratitude is a stepping stone to happiness.
Oh, for sure.
If you start in the morning, regardless of what, what is your condition, it gives you the attitude of doing something positive or doing really good deeds. That's why I think it's a psychological aspect of it as well as faithfulness. It really makes.
Beautiful idea, Simone.
Yeah, right, right. Uh, I'm 100% in agreement. There's, there's no better pathway to happiness than, than gratitude. And you know, what usually ends up happening is that, you know, I was, uh, I was, I was one time standing in the, I was, I was, uh, going to an appointment for the doctor and I had to step out of the room for a minute. I came back and I said, did they call Israel Rice? And the woman said, oh, she did. She called your name while you were, while you stepped out. And she said, and she, she called on our, our old friend, um, oh, now I'm forgetting his name. Uh, what, what was this? What is, was there anything that can go wrong will go wrong? What's his name?
Murphy's Law.
Murphy. Thank you, Murphy. Murphy's Law. So Murphy's Law, anything that can go wrong will go wrong. And whenever we hear that, when, when something goes wrong and someone tells us that, we all nod our head, oh, yes. Well, here's the question. Think of your body. How many things are going right? How many, how many things are going right? And in your life, you know, you have a spouse or you have children and you have, right? I mean, unfortunately, we get caught up on the things that we don't have so that we have the bothersome thing that we have to deal with now and that's bothering us. But don't forget about all of the amazing things that are going right. The abundant blessings, the abounding divine blessings in our life. And if we contemplate that for a moment, starting off with the blessing of life that we say in the morning, boy, that's going to change our whole day. So thank you for that, Anna.
Yes, I believe that.
Sorry, I, I, I didn't realize. I thought you were the other person. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I simply believe that most of the time people are afraid of something. They're afraid of death. They're afraid of illnesses, but what they already have, they just don't count as a blessing. That's why for many of us, life is given. Oh, you know, we are alive before we woke up and, and that's why I believe that this particular prayer kind of brings everything in the proper order. That's no, we are not entitled. It gave us, given us for enjoyment. It gives us for action. It give, it, it was given to us for a completely different purpose, not just simply, you know, go through the daily routine. That's why I think it's just, it really is very meaningful way of starting. And thank you for bringing it. It really.
You brought up this idea of gratitude for, for happiness. So thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
It all, it all comes out. Absolutely. Is Dr. J, by the way, is Dr. J, by chance, Dr. J Holder?
No, it's Dr. Liebman.
Ah, okay. Dr. J Liebman. Okay. All right.
Look at the donut, not the hole.
What is that?
Look at the donut and not the hole.
Right. Yes.
Secret of life.
Yes. Or as Dr. Seuss said, don't cry because it's over. Be happy because it happened.
Yeah, that's, that's really right. Anyway, nobody wants to finish, even though it's four o'clock.
I do, I do want to put a, I do want to make a pitch for my book. As we have the, uh, the four keys of Kabbalah. Whoops. Can you see that? And, uh, it's a spiritual guide to finding meaning and purpose in your life. It goes through the four keys and then I go through talking really how this applies to every single aspect of Judaism. I go through the various meditations, modah ani, saying blessings. Then I go through various Jewish practices like the fill-in, mezuzah, prayer, and then the Jewish holiday. So anyway, Rabbi Smith, you're going to be getting these, right? So he'll be getting them. They'll be available and, um, it's a pleasure meeting each and every one of you.
Thank you, Rabbi, so much.